Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for waiting patiently. The city council is very convening from closed session. I do appreciate your patience as we had a number of issues that we had to deliberate on. So let's adjourn the closed session at 6:45. It's called to order the regular city council meeting at 6:45 on Wednesday, June the 12th. Mr. Clerk, Metro replay schedule, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This may in the Elk Grove City Council be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Saturday, June 15th at 2:00 p.m. and Monday, June 17th at 8:00 p.m. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council preserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. The speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual time speaker time remaining and will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed, indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the speaker cards, the blue cards that can be found at the back of the room, provided the assistance city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Winn.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Sueyn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
I am here. And next item.
They'll take us on to the pledge of allegiance.
And we have a special guest here tonight from 4H, Nicholas. Why don't you step on up and lead us in the pledge?
Please stand. Move all hats. Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, at the beginning of every regular city council meeting, the council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. So if you could.
Mr. Mayor, before we embark on the moment of silence, I'd like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Russ Croco, who was the longtime executive director of the teen center and passed away.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And Mayor, also with the shooting incident that took place in Virginia Beach, we have all the families that were affected and the community as a whole, as well as the victims, and your thoughts and prayers when we have a moment of silence.
Thank you, Members. Appreciate it. All right, join us, please. And I have an agenda in front of me.
The move.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. Next item.
We have no closed session items under Section 3 of the agenda, which should take us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is a presentation of a certificate of recognition for the volunteer efforts of Diego Andradez.
Great. So, folks, I'd like to present this award to Mr. Diego Andradez. And let me just tell you, he looks young, but as I read through this recognition, let me just list that he has served over 500 students, raising over $13,000 for the pediatric trauma program. He also has won an award, right, with the Coannis Scholarship. But as somebody who works in a nonprofit world, I know how important it is to have volunteer hours. And he himself, in just one year, has performed over 20,700 volunteer hours. So let's give him a round of applause for that. More importantly, Diego led all these efforts while also still attending the Laguna Creek High School. And I know our council member Darren Sueyn is a proud father of the Laguna Creek High School as well, too. So I'm sure he's happy to hear that you're coming from one of the schools that he also has kids that have attended as well, too. You know, as a young man, and doing all of this, and being recognized today for the work that you do, you are such a huge role model for young people here and not just the district, but I think all young men and women that are of your age. But to hear that you're able to do all these volunteer hours and go to school full-time as well, too, really does give us hope that, hey, you know what? Volunteerism is such a huge part of your life, and I think that this sets you up to be so successful. Are you Mom and Dad here?
Yes.
Successful for the future. So I want to also thank Mom and Dad, where are you, Mom and Dad, for raising such an amazing young man here, in that it is parents who support kids like this that make our job, and all of us here as adults, and all of us that run nonprofit organizations, be able to do the job and enjoy it so much more. So I'm going to invite our entire council to come down here, because I know how much we appreciate when we have young people that volunteer in the community as well, too. So we get to have the entire council down here. How about that? You want to say a few words? Yes, you do.
I just wanted to say thank you. Okay. Thank you so much for giving me this award. Serving the Elk Grove community has been one of my primary aspects for the last four years, and I'm just so happy to have been back in the community that's turned me into the person I am today and the person who's going off into the real world as I just graduated high school this year. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think Councilmember Detrick has a special ceremony that he has, he loves to do, so.
This is one of our council pins, city pins, so you can be honorary councilman for tonight. Round of applause for one. I do got a question for you. So are you a senior?
I'm a graduate.
Graduate, from where you go to school?
I'm going to the University of Southern California.
Trojan.
Yes.
Same graduate from there as well. Awesome, sir. It's all right.
That'll be item 4.2, which is a presentation by Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District by Executive Director Alberto Ayala.
We had a PowerPoint. Is that something you can?
I'll pull that up for you right now. And there's a keyboard, actually, underneath the speaker podium, that you can advance the PowerPoint with the keyboard, the arrow keys that are to the right.
There you go. Thank you very much, Mayor Lee, Director Lee. Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. That is a tough act to follow, but it's quite fitting, because, you know, a big part of the reason that those of us who work in the air agency get up every day to come to work and do what we need to do is for young people, so they can have a healthy environment to grow in, grow up in, and blossom to very important, contributing members of society. My name is Alberto Ayala. Again, I'm the Air Pollution Control Officer for the Sacramento Metro Air Quality Management District. I have a very brief presentation to share with you. We do want to talk about some of our key priorities and programs, and how they benefit not only the region, but specifically this city, Elk Grove. I appreciate the fact that you guys are running a little late, so I'll try to move us quickly along and deliver some key points. So for those of you that may not be familiar, this is a bit of a, of an introduction, if you will. Who is the Sacramento Metro Air District? We are a special district created in California Health and Safety Code, and we function in this very unique structure that exists in California for environmental protection. So we work with the federal government, EPA, with the state government, the Air Resources Board, and we at the regional level, the air district. The three of us have shared responsibility to advance the city and the region towards clean air. The jurisdiction for our district is the county. But what I want to call your attention to is that when it comes to air quality planning, the region is much larger than that, for obvious reasons, right? I mean, pollution doesn't stay in the county. And you can see the map that we are called to work very closely with the surrounding air districts in the region. And then the last thing I'll say here is something that I'm particularly excited about, and that is, we are very committed to a strong partnership and collaboration in the region. So SECOG, SMOT, Sacramento RT, SDA, and some of the other agencies that are playing a role in the environmental agenda that California has put in place, they are our key partners that we spend a lot of time working with and developing strong bonds. So what do we do as an air district? If there's one thing that I want you to walk away with from today's presentation is this one, because this is a pretty important point that I like to emphasize, make sure that everybody understands it. Transportation funding, federal funding that comes to our Metropolitan Planning Agency, i.e. SECOG, has to, when it's spent, when it's programmed, has to be consistent with the air quality plans that the air district has to put in place. Without that consistency, you risk that funding. So this is called transportation conformity. This is something that you've heard about from our friends at SECOG. But this is a pretty critical function, and we take it very seriously. And I'm spending a little time here, because I think it's a little known fact. All the things that we do at the air district really pale in comparison with not being able to do our function and do it well, so that the region can benefit from our transportation investments that come from the federal government. Here is the actual board. As you know, Mayor Lee is your representative on our board. It's a seven jurisdiction board. It's essentially the county supervisors and the six cities in the county, including Elk Grove. And the current mayor is Councilmember Guerra from Sacramento City Council. The vice mayor is County Supervisor Sue Frost. So just a couple of words in terms of where we are on clean air. By any metric, and I've shown two simple ones, two common ones, particle pollution and ozone pollution here, by any metric, California and the region is making a lot of progress. Over the last three, four decades, California has been really pushing for clean air. There's no question that we've made a lot of progress. However, we got a long ways to go. And I'm just showing you this as a data point. This is a report that the American Lung Association does every year, the State of the Air Report. And unfortunately, we've got some quote-unquote distinctions that we want to get rid of. We are the fifth worst in the nation when it comes to ozone pollution, and we are the 15th worst in the nation when it comes to particle pollution. I think the reasons are going to be obvious as we discuss them. For us in the region, for California as a whole, transportation emissions is certainly the biggest headache, the biggest challenge. And again, it's intuitive. More people, more cars, more people driving more cars. This is one of the reasons that, for example, SECOG is being challenged with meeting the SV375 VMT reduction targets. I often say to my friends at SECOG and Sacramento RT and the other agencies that, for all of us, for all of us that work in leadership roles in the region, transportation is the glue that brings us together, because we come at it from different angles, but it's really transportation the one that is challenging us to move forward. Something very unique to us, and again, I do want to make sure that I highlight this point, is in the winter, and specifically in the winter, we like to use fireplaces, which is fine. I understand there's a societal and cultural connotation to that, but it's also a big source of particle pollution, and something that you may not have appreciated, but part of those particles do cause global warming. So it's a dual impact, if you will, that we are very cognizant of, and that is the reason we have the Check Before You Burn program. It's really critical for us. The new normal is something that, again, not only us, but the entire state is dealing with. I don't need to remind you how impactful the campfire was last year. State Assembly Member McCarty, who represents the region, has stepped up and put in place legislation that explicitly applies to our air district, and basically is calling on us to do a better job coordinating, communicating, getting the technical information on the planning that needs to be placed, so that we can better inform and help our citizens in the region deal with the impacts from wildfires, like what we saw from the campfire. So again, this is work in progress. This particular bill, AB661, is going through the process as we speak, but we are hopeful that this will be a very important tool for us to do, to be better prepared when we need to respond to the next wildfire, because we know it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when the next one will hit. Some of the key benefits, if you will, that we bring to the region, again, is a very fundamental function of monitoring air pollution. And we have here in your city, one of our handful of fixed stations that, they're very sophisticated, monitoring stations. The federal government has very strict rules that we have to comply with. But again, these play a key role, because when a fire hits, when we have another air pollution event, like what we're seeing these days, because it's been so hot, this is really where the information comes from. And as in anything in life, right? If you don't have data, you cannot manage it. So this is really what this is providing for the region. But beyond that, and again, we're getting more specific in terms of, for the city, what we do is, we do a lot of investigation of our quality complaints. So this is really where your citizens may get on the phone, they dial the 1-800 number, and our staff will respond. And forgive me, I failed to recognize that in the audience I brought with me two of our senior managers, Ms. Jamil Moons, who directs our administrative services, and Ms. Amy Roberts, who is Director of Stationary Services, Stationary Sources Division. So it's Ms. Roberts' job to make sure that we have a few staff in place responding to complaints. We have a very active program protecting public health from exposure to asbestos. I don't think I need to emphasize the risk of exposure to those compounds. Check Before You Burn, I talked about it. And again, in general, we work with businesses day in, day out, to make sure that they know the rules, that we have a level playing field, and that they know how to comply. And specifically on businesses, we do about 2,500 inspections a year, because we have about 4,500 permits that are necessary, legally required, for businesses, the businesses in your community and our community, to be able to operate within the confines of the air quality rules. The last point that I'll make is probably the one that certainly gets me excited, simply because I said transportation emissions are the largest source of air and climate pollution. The most effective, and the quickest, and the best way to get to emission reductions from the transportation sectors is to invest in cleaner technology. And this is where we, as an effectively working air district, can bring a direct benefit to the region, because the state has a healthy, mature, and growing cap and trade program, and we in the district take very seriously our ability to be able to compete with other regions, so that we can access some of that cap and trade funding and bring it to the region. How do we bring it to the region? Every dot you see in this map represents a business that has made the choice to work with us, so that we can provide to them incentives to buy cleaner-than-requiered technology. And we have a spectrum of the small, large, and everybody in between. And the grants run from, you know, a few thousand dollars to upwards of a couple million dollars. And again, the reason we like this is because this is the quickest way to get us to the emission reductions that we need to be able to show that we are complying with the air quality plans that the state and the federal government requires. In the future, I think we're really excited, because electrification is here, and there's a lot of opportunities. I don't need to remind you of that. Transit buses are obviously a perfect example. The school buses that are, that can be and will be electric, we have some of the most successful programs in the region, and we certainly see a lot of potential for Elk Grove and other jurisdictions to benefit from here. So I'll just point out some of those examples. To date, we have invested in this city, in this region, $6 million, which is a significant amount of investment. But what is exciting is that we've identified an additional $40 million worth of investments, right? So these are projects shovel-ready, that if we can succeed and compete well to try to attract cap and trade funding, we can begin to realize the public health benefit of reducing emissions from these applications. So with the support of our Board of Directors, certainly, but also from city councils like yourselves, we hope that we can continue on this path to attract more investments. And the last thing that I'll say is, obviously, as an air district, we do play a key role in the land use sequel process, and we work with your city very well. We've assisted in the Climate Action Plan, which is extremely critical. So I commend you and invite you to support that development. We do construction mitigation air quality plans, and also the thresholds for conventional and greenhouse gas pollution. So with that, again, this is a bit of an introduction. I want to thank you for giving us the time. Thanks to Director Lee for inviting us. We're here to work with you, and I don't know if we have time for questions now or later. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman?
Thanks for being here, Alberto. With the federal government doing their changes right now, what's your take on that?
We're very worried. We're very worried, obviously, because rollback of any environmental protections is that. It's just, you know, we took one step forward, and we're taking two back. And we're not the only ones that are worried. SECOG has been very vocal about the fact that rolling back efficiency standards, for example, for cars, is just going to make it that much harder for us to. And it's a balancing act, right? I mean, if transportation is going to emit more, those of us at the local level are going to have to go to station resources to try to get the reduction. So it is concerning.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Ayala, you talked about the inspections district-wide. Do you know the breakdown of that, and how many inspections actually takes place in the city of Elk Grove?
We do. Ms. Roberts?
Five percent of the total.
Five percent.
Specifically, the city of Elk Grove, yes.
Any other questions?
Just thank you. Appreciate it. And it's always nice to look at the short-term and long-term effects of what you can do. And I've been involved with the campfires, as well as a lot of the other fires from the utility side, so I mean, boy, I know exactly what you're talking about, and the, not only the devastation of the property, but obviously the pollution, both in the air as well as groundwater and everything else.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. And I expect yearly reports, so I'm going to bug you again next year. But I do appreciate you taking the time to come out here, not only that, but also the team. And some of you are Elk Groveans, so that makes you extra special.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. All right, let's go to the next item.
Take us to item 4.3, the Disability Advisory Committee Annual Update, and I'd invite up Vice Chair Karen Gressenmeyer.
I'm Karen Gressenmeyer, and I'm a member of the DAC. And I'm here to make our yearly presentation of all of our good deeds. So allow me to get started. Okay. So, okay, so I don't think I need to tell you who the committee members are, or would you care to know?
It'd be nice to introduce.
Sure, introduce them. Have them stand or something.
Okay. Yeah, it's pretty much, yeah, Steve, sorry, Ted Clark's the chairman, and me, Karen Gressenmeyer, I'm the vice chair, and then Steve Capps is a committee member, Bruce Cager, Ann Hennessy, and of course, Jim Ramsey is our, what would you call him? He runs us. Keeps us out of trouble most times.
Good job, Jim.
Okay, so moving on to our accomplishments for 2018. We provided guidance to the city council regarding city projects involving parking in light of one in eight Californians holding disabled parking placards, me as one. Provide feedback to city staff on the community center and Old Town Plaza accessibility and parking, Old Town Streetscape accessibility, Elk Grove Florence pedestrian improvements, and the Elk Grove Boulevard pedestrian bike bridge, traffic signal accessibility, Elk Grove Creek Trail accessibility, Strawberry Creek Trail accessibility, and annual curb ramp update project. In addition to which, we awarded the 12th Annual Above and Beyond Accessibility Awards to Vanessa Biker, the Fly Brave Foundation supporting adults with developmental disabilities by developing their talents and interests in employment opportunities, and then Kathy Rhimes, the Zen Car Adult Care, daycare. And then we reviewed and recommended approval of the city's updated ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. We supported, of course, the proclamation of October 15th as White Kane Safety Day, supported the proclamation of October as Disability Employment Awareness Month, and supported the California Commission on Disability Access Educational Seminar on ADA access in the restaurant industry. In addition to which, provided review and support of accessibility improvements and projects, provide review of changes in additions to the city's ADA self-evaluation and transition plan, provide review and support of the transit and evers van services, and then lastly, solicit review and award the 13th Annual Above and Beyond Awards. And that's the presentation. And that's what we did for the year. See you guys next year. I can't answer any questions, because unfortunately, due to health, I didn't attend a lot of these things. We'll probably have to ask Ted, I mean Ted, who's unfortunately not here. But Jim's here, if you have any questions.
Well, I just want to say thank you for your hard work.
Oh, it's my pleasure. This year, I haven't been very useful.
Councilman Nusri?
Yeah.
Karen, appreciate the years of service you've been giving to this.
Oh, yes. I've become more and more involved as time goes on, as I become more decrepit, and, but I also have family members, too, that have been able, are severely disabled, and it's been extremely helpful to learn these things, and to learn from them what I need to ask everybody else. So, yes.
One thing I'd like to share with the DAC is, I think a lot of you know that I've been very involved with training disabled water skiers.
Yeah.
And they're having the world championships will be in Norway, and one of the young men that we train here in Elk Grove will be going back to represent the United States. And then our son, who's one of the coaches of these young men, has been invited to be one of the coaches for the USA, and will be back in Norway coaching the US team.
Oh, that's nice.
Pretty proud to have some representation from Elk Grove, both as a...
And here, I'm happy that I'm walking around, let alone conquering the world. It's good to hear. I like hearing about people that do things like that. Okay, well, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
See you next year.
All right, next item.
They'll take us on to Section 5, public comment.
Okay, first speaker we have on deck is Deborah Sibner. Following Deborah is George Murphy.
My name is Deborah Sibner, and I have been a resident of Elk Grove since 1986. Why would the city of Elk Grove allow a 12-story trauma-two hospital to be built at West Tarrin and Elk Grove Boulevard? Is this really a good location for such a facility? I am here to lend my voice to those in opposition to this project. I feel that such a hospital is not appropriate nor prudent for this location. The project is ill-conceived, and I fear destined for failure if allowed to proceed. Alvin Chung is the face of the proposed CNU hospital, but Dr. Chung also serves as the chairperson of the Board of Trustees with the San Jose-based International Technology University, another for-profit school. It should be noted that ITU has been reported as an easy way for foreign students to get visas, and has even been under investigation by Homeland Security. CNU recently posted a job opening for an international student specialist to advise and assist with visa processing. Will CNU also become a convenient method for obtaining a visa? Will Homeland Security be required to investigate CNU at some point? Another issue with CNU is that private for-profit schools seem to eventually run into issues, such as false and/or overstated claims, unethical practices regarding loans for tuition, and accreditation problems. For example, Heald College once had a presence in Sacramento, but in 2015, due to findings by the United States Department of Education, the college was found to have misrepresented job placement rates... job placement rates in certain programs at the college. The Department of Education made students of these programs eligible to have their debts canceled. Corinthian College, which had acquired Heald, was assessed a fine of thirty million and shut down all its campuses in 2015. Ironically, the Rancho Cordova campus of CNU now occupies the former Heald space. All of this and more raises the question of what does Dr. Chung know about building and running a trauma-two hospital? The possibility that CNU collapses and abandons their campus is truly a concern, especially after our experience with the ghost mall. How would the city handle a half-built ghost hospital? By that time, Stone Lake Landing and its businesses will be gone. We will be left not only without restaurant, retail, and service-oriented businesses on our end of Elk Grove, but we will be left with a blighted area that will take years to recover. I close with goshenary tale. The city of Dixon enthusiastically embraced Carissa Carpenter and her big plans to bring a motion picture studio to their town until they discovered that she was a fraud. Alvin Chung might be able to run a medical school, but can he build and run a 400-bed hospital? Please ensure that you and the city of Elk Grove aren't embarrassed by someone's folly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is George Murphy. Following George is Lynn Wheat.
I want to thank Alberto for the segue. I'm here tonight to talk about the EV event we had this past weekend here at City Hall Parking Lot. I know that this is a pretty busy time of the year, and not all of you can make it Saturday, but for those of you that did, we appreciate you coming out and showing your support. It meant a lot to us. I want to give you a recap of the event this weekend. It was called Tacos, Test Drives and Tacos, but I did want to thank a few people first. First of all, I want to thank the city manager for his leadership in supporting a partnership with SMUD to get this event off the ground. Also need to thank Elk Grove PD, Special Waste Collection Center and Public Affairs for participating in the event, but I especially want to thank Doug Scott of Facilities. He put this, put the whole facility together for us and made it ready for our use. One other group that I think is important to recognize is the Citizens Group, led by Bill Meyer, is that they originally came up with the idea. Commissioner McKenzie Weiser and myself, we were more than happy to facilitate and help organize the event on behalf of the city. Now the recap. We estimate about 500 people attended the event. There were six different EV models available for test drive, representing local dealerships, Nila BMW, Maida Toyota, and Nissan all of Elk Grove. Two hundred and eleven test drives and an unknown number of owner ride-alongs were taken, and all were completed with no emissions being produced. That's nearly one test drive every minute. That's incredible. And finally, we had three informational events held here in chambers that were well-attended, and the people that came out, I was amazed at the interest, the questions that were asked, and the curiosity about EVs. All in all, we believe and we know this is a very successful event, showing that people have a real interest in EVs. It also shows that people need and they want good information to aid in making a decision when it comes to purchasing an EV. This event was successful beyond all recommendations, but the real measure of success will be seeing more Elk Groveans driving EVs around town and on the freeways, doing our part to reduce emissions, protect the environment. Maybe there's some personal economic issues where people can save money on car maintenance and cost, and maybe even beat our cap goals. But thank you for allowing us to use the facility. It was a good event. Any questions?
Thank you, George. Appreciate it.
Thank you, George. Extra Mayor. George?
Go ahead.
Hey, well, so I also want to commend you guys as well and everybody that you listed on there, but my question for you is just because there's those 500 people this year, I bet if you do it again next year, we'd get a lot more people and people that are interested to find out more, so I'm going to ask you guys to bring it back again next year.
Well, I'll ask, we'll ask about maybe using the community center then.
Yeah.
It might be a great venue, well-located, so we'll see how that would work out. There's already been talk about other events, but we need to get over to this and take a break.
Yeah.
It was a lot of fun.
Great, thank you.
For coming out.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn Wheat is Mark Graham.
Limited to three minutes, I hope that I can get through all the events and activities since I last spoke, as it has been a phenomenal month. I had the opportunity to attend the Laguna Creek Trail and Bruceville Sidewalk Project meeting hosted by city staff. I'm excited about the trail and sidewalk completion, as the adoption of overriding considerations has our roads overloaded. It was my privilege to travel with my good friend to destination city Anaheim and experience the well-designed and planned Disneyland parks. Considering Elk Grove my home base, I also traveled again, exploring Northern California and the open spaces of nature. I missed the last city council meeting due to illness. That being the case, I was, however, able to view the meeting from home. May 25th, attended the grand opening of the Civic Center Swimming Facility. I saw my good friend Sharon, and also while waiting in line, met other residents interested in checking out the facility. I enjoyed seeing the excitement of the young people swimming, determined to ignore the cold, breezy weather. I was disappointed Grover did not make an appearance, as I was looking for a photo opportunity and witnessing Grover dipping his toe into the pool. I even looked into his grotto, and he wasn't there. May 28th, I had the opportunity to attend the zoning administrative meeting, and I want to thank staff for the opportunity to speak during public comment. All things being equal, I'm happy to report our residents and out-of-town guests will no longer have to look at razor wire along Stockton Boulevard. I look forward to the opportunity to attend all future zoning administrative meetings. May 29th, I had the opportunity to attend Senior Day in the park. This event offered seniors an opportunity to learn about services available within our community, as well as the region. June 8th, I attended the public art dedication at the Civic Center site. I went with fresh eyes, even recognizing that beauty is in the eye of the beholder and so is art. I want to thank the Art Commission for their efforts to bring art to our community, as art is something people of all ages can enjoy. My impression of the art, I found several of the pieces interesting and well-placed. The iconic piece is not my favorite, and one of my good friends referred to the piece as "The Cage." I have heard it called an upside-down raindrop. I've been reassured it looks better at night when lit up. June 10th, I had the privilege of attending the Sacramento Groundwater Authority Strategic Planning Meeting. This day-long event proved to me that water is indeed the new gold. June 11th, I attended the 5G Information Meeting hosted by Mark Graham, Mayor Lee, and Supervisor Natoli. I recognize I've been called a complainer and need to get a life, but all things being equal, Elk Grove is my home, and I want the best for all residents. However, sometimes after attending these meetings, I just feel like my head is going to explode. This is Lynn Wheat, District Three, and this is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat. Mark Graham is our next speaker. Following Mark Graham is Jeff Mickelson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham from Elk Grove. Well, as Lynn just referred to, last night was our symposium right here, and the title was 5G EMF and Your Health. I'm totally grateful to Mayor Lee and Supervisor Natoli for putting this thing on. We had a professional videographer record the whole thing. When the video is ready, I will send a link to you. And also, we came up with an idea, this was actually the mayor's idea. The way we handled questions and answers was, we gave each person in the audience an index card and said, if you have a question, write it down, pass it forward, and Mayor Lee or Supervisor Natoli will ask the question of our panelists. We had three people on the panel, a medical doctor and an electromagnetic radiation specialist, and a representative from the industry, shall we say. And that was a really interesting, the whole thing was fascinating, I thought, but how to hear their various answers to the questions, that was an eye-opener. So what we're going to do is compile the questions, send them to each of the panelists for them to provide their written answers if they would like, and then make those questions and answers available to everybody on the council and on the staff so you can hear, you can read it. Yes, you're welcome. And I think that you're more likely to, well, you can go through those at your own pace and pick, and you look at what topics you want to read about, you're more likely to do that than to watch a two-hour video, probably. All right. Regarding the Singular Code Amendment, I heard that it's supposed to be, it's really AT&amp;T, I don't know why the city's calling it Singular, but EG 18-006, I've heard that it's going to be on the Planning Commission's agenda for July 18th, and moving towards getting up to the council, right? And this is where AT&amp;T asks for a code amendment to take the permitting process away from the council and the public and put it all in Mr. Murdoch's capable hands. Now, last time I spoke with Mr. Hobbs about this, he, well, let me back up. On November 28th at the Community Workshop, Mr. Hobbs said that a federal order, an order by a federal agency is presumed to be valid. It's presumed to be legal, so that you would have to comply. He also said, and I agree, that it's probably going to be overturned by the US Court of Appeals, because there are lots of cities, including lots of cities in California, that have sued the FCC saying, you don't have the power to do this in the first place. And I would like for the council to ask for a briefing from Mr. Hobbs on this question. So here's the thing, you don't have to rush. Just because the order is presumed valid does not mean you have to go ahead and approve a code amendment to satisfy AT&amp;T or for whatever reason now. I think it's in the city's interest to wait until this case is completed, because it will probably be overturned by the Court of Appeals, and what the difference that that makes is that the rules will be much more in the city's favor after the court overturns the FCC order. You see? And if the city rushes to change the policy, put in a code amendment now-
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
...that complies with the FCC order, the rules are much more in the industry's favor and less in the city's favor. I thank you all.
Next speaker is Jeff Mickelson. Following Jeff is Nicholas Albianni.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Chamber members. My name is Jeff Mickelson. I'm not an Elk Grove resident. I'm actually from Shingle Springs. I came down and watched the 5G Symposium last night, very informative, pros and cons. Learned a lot of things, some very important things I'd like to bring to your attention tonight. The FCC RF standard is based on thermal heating of the skin, not on the internal damage to our bodies. Their standard is millions of times higher than safe levels. This renders it not just useless, but highly dangerous, because people think they're safe following their standard. We live in a time like no other. As technology increases, so do our human diseases. Concerning RF energy, we already have more than enough empirical evidence to know that even low levels of harmful, even low levels are harmful not only to us, but to plants, insects, and the animals around us. The most damning statement last night came from Professor Davis, who is pro-5G, and I thought it was kind of ironic that he's, his statements rung out like a bell. When asked why experiments haven't been performed on humans, he said, "There have been no human studies because they didn't want to experiment on humans." Okay? Yet right now, we're considering a citywide experiment on all of our citizens. Hasn't been tested. They're going to test it on us? Just deploy it and see it happens? Could there be a more powerful definition of insanity? I think not. Had you attended the Symposium last night, you would have heard a lot of deleterious effects at extremely low levels. And not all of us are RF-insensitive, but those of us who are have to walk around with Faraday cages on clothing and stuff. It's kind of ridiculous. And who's to say what the long-term effects are? We don't know. Hasn't been tested. Lastly, if the decision is made to go ahead with the 5G experiment, the legal consequences will rest on the shoulders of those who voted it in, so I implore you to do your homework before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mickelson. Our final speaker is Nicholas Albianni. Come on up.
I am here on behalf of 4H and also FFA to thank you all for being willing to contribute your funds towards buying animals at the county fair this year. And you've had a great impact on trying to help keep the fair open, and helping to support young people's agricultural projects. If you'd like to see the pictures of the people and the animals that you bought, they're on the back table over there, and I brought you all hats from the livestock function.
Thank you so much. That wasn't necessary. I think each and every one of us would be more than happy to support the young people that are doing a good thing, so.
Certainly thankful to have you supporting us.
All right. Shall we step down and get a picture after your comments?
And Nicholas, your-
And also get your hats.
Your grandfather has been a true champion for not only the, your, his son and all his grandkids, all the kids of all the Elk Grove high schools and beyond for supporting this, so it's a pleasure to support you and the whole program.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, shall we?
[inaudible]
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 All right, let's move to the next item.
Take us to section six, general administration information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I have a few updates for you and things happening around the city. First item is, at the last meeting, we, the police department, talked about our new UAS program, and our otherwise known as the drone program, soon to be deployed by our police department. There's going to be a community meeting coming up on Wednesday, June 19th, six o'clock here in the council chambers to learn more about that and discuss how that program will be rolled out in our community and what precautions are being taken. Also, coming up on June 22nd, it's a week from this Saturday, is the 15th Annual Run for Hunger. Residents can sign up online at egrunforhunger.com. City is an event sponsor and will be providing traffic management and police services for this event. Next Sunday, June 23rd, the city's recycling and waste team will host the first-ever city-sponsored community garage sale at the Old Town Plaza from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Sale stalls have been sold out for more than a month. Visitors can attend for free in search of something special and great stuff from the landfills. Details about the event are on the city's website. The Civic Summer Program kicks off next week. This program is a collaboration between the city and Elk Grove Unified School District to introduce junior and senior high school students to careers in public service. More than 180 applications came in for this year's program, and 34 students were selected to participate. The program will offer two weeks of classroom-style learning with several guest speakers, followed by a three-week internship experience starting July 8th with placements at the city of Elk Grove, Elk Grove Unified School District, Casuna's Community Services District, Elk Grove Food Bank, California North State University, Paratransit, Inc., Sacramento County Sheriff, Sacramento Fire, and more. Graduation is scheduled for Friday, July 26th, in the council chambers. The chief of police recruitment has begun and will be open until July 8th. Recruiters met with many community members and completed a community meeting last month. For those who are unable to attend those meetings, we are offering an online survey option where a community can participate and offer their input on the qualities it would like to see in the new chief of police. You can visit the homepage of the city's website to participate in that survey. Police Department is excited to announce the opening of its Community Exchange Zone right out front of here of this building. The Community Exchange Zone provides an environment with enhanced safety for people who buy, sell, or trade items in private party transactions with people they don't know. Additionally, the area can be used as a safe and neutral site for child custody exchanges. Located in the front parking lot here, 8400 Laguna Palms Way, the Community Exchange Zone features two parking stalls distinctly colored and marked with paint and signage. In addition, there's a dedicated camera recording 24 hours a day. The goal of the Community Exchange Program is to help reduce and deter fraudulent transactions, thefts, violent custody disputes, and robberies.
Okay, Councilman Detrick, would you like to start?
Sure. First of all, we got a couple special things for the vice mayor and our transit supervisor, Mike Costa. They're, it's both their birthdays today, so happy birthday. Had the opportunity to attend the reception, the VIP reception at the Aquatic Center for the soft opening and then the grand opening the following day. Was joined by most of the council members. Phenomenal project, something that we can all be proud of. Attended the Memorial Day event at the Elk Grove Cemetery. Very, very, done very, very well. Spent an hour-long presentation and some of the stories and speakers were very, very touching. As most of you know, I sit on the Sacramento Cable Commission, which is one of the few agencies that always funds money back to Elk Grove. Past our budget, we will be, it's forecasted to be a little over a million dollars that'll be coming in from the franchise fees. And then I was, we also had the election of the new officers and I was nominated as to be the chair and unanimously appointed by the commission, so that was a nice honor.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We mentioned earlier, we're closing the meeting in honor of Russ Croco. And they had the celebration of life and I believe Vice Mayor Hume was there. I can't remember if any other council members were there, but Russ was definitely a phenomenal man. He was not only a friend but community leader and fellow Rotarian, and he'll be dearly missed. He left us way too young. Also went to the city arts commission, hosted the, kind of the grand opening of all the art at the community center. The, there's a half a dozen pieces that are out on display. You should really take the time to get over there. It's really turned out to be a beautiful project. In fact, Vice Mayor Hume and I were walking down the promenade there and just, you know, it's remarkable. You look, you look at how that's all come out from the original vision and sometimes, you know, architectural drawings can sometimes look better than the reality when they're finished. And I think this is the other way around. It's, it's come out, it was beautiful in its renderings, but now to see the total project and now that it's, at least that phase is finished and coming the other phase here in the fall is just a huge, huge asset to the city. And to see hundreds of peoples on a Saturday afternoon still using the pool, as well as all the swim teams and everything else, it's, it's pretty amazing. Had the opportunity to, for the sec, go to the Second Annual Bounty on the Boulevard. And for those of you who are not familiar with it, it's a, it's a big fundraiser for the Elk Grove Foundation, which Vice Mayor Hume was part of the founding, founding father on that, I believe, right?
Not quite.
But has definitely been very involved with it. And last year, they gave out, I think it was over seven, one hundred and seventy-five scholarships going out to graduating seniors from high schools in the Elk Grove Unified School District. So a huge event, very well done. And I think the entire council was there supporting the event. And that's, oh, had the, yesterday, we had the twenty-fifth anniversary of our volunteers in police services. And there, there's one person that was here being awarded that had served all full twenty-five years as a volunteer. So it's pretty impressive. And I forget what the actual number of hours and calculation of dollar savings, but it's, it's in the millions in the dollar savings and the hours are unbelievable that these guys put, these men and women put in. And we would not be able to provide the services that we provide to the residents of Elk Grove and businesses without those volunteers. So hats off to them again. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hoen.
Thank you, sir. I will be quick and I won't go through all the community events, but I will highlight the, yesterday, I was able to make it towards the tell-in of the volunteer, the twenty-fifth anniversary event here in our chambers. And I have to tell you how wonderful it was to see everybody show up in their uniforms, I'd say, and so excited to be there and just so proud to, to be able to display the badge and the uniform and just be so involved in our police department. And I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate when folks volunteer their time. And in that room there, we had so many people that not just only love our city but love our police department, and it truly showed. So I want to thank the chief for the leadership in that, but also thank all of them for their hours of work in the city and with the department as well, too. And we were, the chief was gracious enough to give us all a little coin, right, a twenty-fifth anniversary coin. So thank you. That's my very first coin I've received from the Elk Grove Police Department, so thank you so much for that. I also want to just talk a little bit about the community exchange zone that we see right out there. That, we read so much about folks that do these private sales on Craigslist or Facebook or whatnot, and it turns bad. And this here gives them the opportunity to, instead of meeting at a parking lot of a supermarket or a McDonald's or whatnot, to be able to do it here in a safe space. So I would love to see in the next couple of months if we can show numbers of how often it's used because I know it's under twenty-four-hour surveillance. I just think this is a really great opportunity for our community here to feel safe if they want to sell, sell anything on Craigslist, Facebook, or wherever the market is that they're selling to come here and do that exchange. So thank you so much for doing that. I, there's a Capitol meeting this Saturday. I encourage everybody to attend. One of the topics that will be on there is the census twenty-twenty. So many things are changing from ten years ago when the census was out. For instance, now, they will be all done online. There will be several attempts to be, to reach to the households, but everything is going to be done online. And unless we educate the community about the importance of filling out the census form and completing it, we're not going to get counted. And it's not just about our, our minority community, although the API community was definitely undercounted this last time around, it's, it's everybody. It's the entire community. And so I encourage us to make sure that we inform our community members how important it is to complete that because it will show numbers here for our city as well, too. And we have grown so much in the last, last ten years, and that's all I've got, sir.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Suh.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to commend the police department for, for that service. I think it's very innovative. Saw a lot of positive responses to that. And I also want to add in my congratulations and appreciation for the volunteers in policing on their twenty-five years. Can't thank those folks enough. In case anybody's wondering, I was told that it started with the sheriff's department. That's why it's going on longer than, than we've been incorporated, so just so folks were wondering. I want to commend staff for their role in Petapalooza. I thought that was a fantastic event. The mayor and I were out there as long as, as well as the vice mayor. It was really a great event having Andy Graham come out and, and country singer Chris Jansen, who I've never heard before, but he put on a phenomenal show. And just a great place for folks to get out there with their, their pets and enjoy the , the community. And then I also want to commend staff for putting on, entering the city and, and into the, for the first time, for us participating in the, in the pride march downtown. I know that, you know, we're always trying to do better as a city and we, you know, we've, we've always talked about being an inclusive city, and I think this is one of those times where we're, you know, we've, we've talked the talk and now we're literally walking the walk in that. So look forward to future participations in those events as well. Finally, SECOG, just want to give folks a heads-up. The Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, process is getting started. Just let, and these are affordable housing sites that the city is required to designate and zone for affordable housing. And the anticipation for this is probably between a fifty and eighty percent increase since the last round. So we just, just want to let everybody know. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Detrick, for the birthday wishes. And Mike, I got cameras that document if I'm not here. I don't know what your excuse for being here is, so. But I had a couple of meetings, a connector meeting, but the focus was primarily at the other end and not down at Elk Grove. We had a special RT meeting. We had a San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting. I was out at the Petapalooza, took the Wonder Dog out there to have him do the obstacle course, and he did a great job till he jumped the fence. And then went down to the LAFCO meeting where they recognized my service on that board. I attended the electric vehicle fair that Commissioner Murphy mentioned previously. I was one of those that was there to gain some knowledge, and I did that and am still weighing my options, but I can make a more informed decision at this point. And then I went down and attended the regional safety fair down in the park, which I was blown away at the size of the event and the number of agencies that turned out. I expected it just to be our local PD and Casuna's Fire, and it was so much more than that. Department of Corrections, DEA, I mean, all sorts of, Cal Fire was out there, the helicopters were out there, kids were having a great time. It was really a wonderful event and very well-attended. And then attended Russ Croco's celebration of life. That was a very well-attended event, and he was a very spectacular person who had a huge heart. And a lot of people don't know this, but he actually worked the last couple of years before he, quote-unquote, retired without pay for the teen center in order to keep that organization afloat. So he, he truly was a good guy. And then went out to the civic center art unveiling. And as was mentioned before, I liked some of the pieces better than others, but I think in total, there's a little something for everyone to, to pick up on. And as was mentioned by Councilmember Detrick, just the, the whole sort of synergy, that space is really starting to come together, and I think it's a wonderful thing. And then was attended and was the auctioneer at the Bounty on the Boulevard event. And just to give a little bit of hindsight, the community foundation was formed back in the mid-eighties when I was still in high school. So I was not one of the founding fathers on that, but-
But you could have been a volun, you could have been a volunteer like that young man.
I, I could have, yeah. If I had as much going for me as that young man did, I could have, but I think my priorities were elsewhere. But anyway, the regional scholarship foundation last year gave out over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in scholarships, and we do that every year. And so this was a great event. It was very well-attended and hopefully it'll be even more successful next year. Had an RT meeting Monday night, nothing to report from that, and have Paratransit next Monday. And then the last thing that I want to mention, and normally I would brush this kind of thing off and not let it get to me, but this one is especially personal. I've heard that there is criticism of councilmembers that didn't attend certain Memorial Day events. And I spent Memorial Day driving my mom up to my father's grave. My father, who is a deceased veteran, died active duty in the military. So I just say that as a cautionary tale to be without sin before you start casting stones. You have no idea what other people are doing, how they're spending their time. The fact that I'm not out at a local event doesn't mean I'm not honoring our deceased veterans. So thank you for indulging me in that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let me see, a lot of, a number of these events have already been reported, so I'll just highlight the two, two events that I thought was pretty profound. Petapalooza, I was certainly impressed with that, the number of people that came out. And I think this year, we have a lot more people who came out, right? Because let's just say it was more than just about pets. It was really about families just coming out with your four-legged friends. So excellent concert. I, I'm looking forward to next year's event. The, the other was, that I think is worthy of highlighting again, is the Aquatic Center. This was awesome. I, there's no other word that can fully describe the hard work that this council and also previous councils have worked on. And to many of the staff members who have crunched numbers, you know, sharpen your pencils. And to the community, the swim teams, how all this came together is pretty impressive. And, you know, I'm just real proud with the opening, the number of people that actually came out and participated. Made me proud to be in Elk Grove. So that is all. Thank you. And let's move to the next item.
Take us to section eight, consent calendar items.
Okay. All right, want to open public comment, seeing that no members of the public side have to speak. Want to close the public comment? Councilor Blair Shannon-Dixon.
Move consent.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. All right, next item.
Take us on to section nine, our public hearings, starting with item nine point one, which is the public hearing to consider conditional use permit amendment and design review amendment for the landing assisted living project located at eighty-eight and seventy-one East Stockton Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Matt Diaz, Senior Planner, City of Elk Grove. This is an amendment to the landing assisted living project. This project is located eighty-eight ninety-eight East Stockton Boulevard. The project consists of a conditional use permit and design review amendment to construct a new approximately twelve-hundred-square-foot clubhouse and outdoor swimming pool for the landing assisted facility. A little bit of a background, this project was originally approved in January of two thousand seventeen. It included a rezone, conditional use permit, and design review to construct the care facility, which included forty-eight member care units, one hundred and seven assisted living units, and fifty independent living units. The applicant has indicated an increase in care facility competition has created the need for increased amenities at this facility. There is the proposed site plans you can see in the circle. We're essentially replacing a footprint of an existing duplex that was approved with the project with the proposed clubhouse and pool area. This will be located to the drainage and open space parcel to the south and has no other impacts to the parking or circulation proposed. There is the proposed clubhouse and pool area, as well as a floor plan, which includes an activity area, retreat, den, covered patio, and bathrooms. There are the elevations with heights ranging from thirteen, fifteen, to twenty feet at max. The design is comparable to the original approval. There's a rendering of what the exhibit will look like from the internal street system. And a little bit of summary, the amendments will be similar in size, location, and design as the approved duplexes for that location. The clubhouse and pool will not be adjacent to any conflicting uses. They will not be available to the general public. The pool area is restricted to daytime hours. The project continues to comply with the general plan. As part of the construction plan submitted, and I'll let the applicant kind of explain this a little bit more, it seems the clubhouse might actually be closer to fourteen-hundred square feet. This is based on a recent submitted made to city staff. So we just want to address that again. The applicant can speak a little more to that. But despite this slight increase in size, staff still finds no further environmental review is required pursuant to seek with section one-five-one-eight-three and recommend approval of the conditional use permit and design review amendment for this project. Staff, as well as the applicant, here to address any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions?
No.
All right. At this point, I want to declare public hearing open. I'd like to invite the applicant to come on up. And again, for the record, there is no time limit.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jeremy Sutter, and I work for the architect on this project, Jeffrey DeMeren Associates. And with me is Stephen Ballier. He works with, with me as well. Basically, we've been doing the project and we're in the middle of construction. And as we're getting to the point now where we're getting closer to finishing the, the main building and, and starting to build some of the cottages and the, we're starting to do some of the lease-ups. And so really, the, the motivation behind what's driving this request to add a clubhouse and a pool is that during the lease-ups, we, we noticed that there's, in talking with, with the potential residents, is that there's a desire for some additional- public. The pool areas, particular daytime hours. The project continues to comply with the general plan. As part of the construction plan submitted, and I'll let the applicant kind of explain this a little bit more, it seems the clubhouse might actually be closer to 1,400 square feet. This is based on a recent submitted made to city staff. So we just want to address that again. The applicant can speak a little more to that. But despite this slight increase in size, staff still finds no further environmental review is required pursuant to Sec. 15183 and recommends approval of the conditional use permit and design review amendment for this project. Staff, as well as the applicant, here to address any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions?
No.
Nope. All right. At this point, want to declare public hearing open. I'd like to invite the applicant to come on up. And again, for the record, there is no time limit.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jeremy Sutter. I work for the architect on this project, Jeffrey DeMeren Associates. And with me is Stephen Ballier. He works with me as well. Basically, we've been doing the project and we're in the middle of construction and as we're getting to the point now where we're getting closer to finishing the main building and starting to build some of the cottages and the, we're starting to do some of the lease-ups. And so really, the motivation behind what's driving this request to add a clubhouse and a pool is that during the lease-ups, we noticed that there's, in talking with the potential residents, is that there's a desire for some additional amenities. And we feel that providing this extra amenity to the clubhouse will really help with the lifestyle and recreation opportunities for those members and provide some opportunities for some therapy for the assisted living residents, as well as just opportunities for gatherings and things of that nature for, and more of a sense of community for the cottage residents. And so really, the intent of it is just to provide additional amenities for them, just to help with the lease-up and provide a better lifestyle. The architecture for the clubhouse is really, we wanted to make sure it wasn't identical to the actual cottages and we wanted to mimic more of the main building so that people, when they drive by, would notice it's, what it was, is the intended of the clubhouse. But it really is designed to work in harmony with the cottages and the clubhouse together. I think we also provided material boards for you to look at. And one thing that's also come up that we just had a meeting with staff on is, as we go forward with this, we would like to request that there maybe give a little flexibility in terms of where the location of some of the amenities are, like the pool, because as we're continuing to lease-up since we submitted this, there has been some discussion of possibly moving the location of the pool more to a more centralized location. And I don't, do you have a, the concept is, is we want to keep the clubhouse where it is, so really it's just a matter of if there's a need for... As we're doing lease-ups, if there's a need more for some additional recreation opportunities, we would move the pool to the middle to be a little bit better access for the assisted living and possibly do like a bocce ball court or something a little more active for the cottages. The architecture wouldn't be changing for the clubhouse. The use of the clubhouse wouldn't be changing. It's just, we want to try to create a little flexibility to make sure that we meet market demands, to make sure the project stays successful. And this is, this is coming from what we're hearing from people that are interested in living here. So we're asking that, if that's, if the council is amenable to that, to give the, maybe give some discretion to the planning director to allow us to maybe move the pool to another location if that's something that would work better for the project and add some additional amenities like a bocce ball court or something like that in that space.
Actually, I have a question for Matt. Have you reviewed that proposal?
Correct. Staff has met with the applicant on this proposal in terms of proposed alternative location. I think we have some draft language, should the council be open to it in terms of how we would monitor it per the conditions, but staff has reviewed it and didn't really see any kind of negative impacts from the proposed location, which would be central in the overall facility.
So it doesn't affect any of the other, like, I see it's going to be taken out of the green belt that's there in the middle. It doesn't affect any ratios of anything we need to comply with?
We would still maintain an overall shared area space for the site and especially if they were to relocate the pool, you would essentially have more amenity sites for the clubhouse area to the south. So he would essentially be swapping square footage for square footage somewhere else with that proposed alternative.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Nope. Right, at this point, want to open for a public comment. See that one member of the public has signed up to speak. Deborah Reyes.
Good evening. Again, my name is Deborah Reyes. I live on Alexia Court. First, I'd like to say thank you for sending out letters rather than postcards that no one looks at showing there will be a meeting regarding a new development or amending a project. That being said, I would like to mention some issues with the project from my perspective along with other residents in the area. Somewhere along the lines, they amended the fence that was supposed to be a masonry fence that I never received any notices. The fence is a cheap substitution for the masonry wall. I still feel along with other residents that the fence should have been at least eight foot, preferably 10, but it's only six. They were supposed to put dirt along the bottom of the fence, which to this day has not been done. They were supposed to tie the existing fences with a new one without gaps. They said they were going to fix the one in my yard. It still has not been done. They also amended the wall a way that was supposed to separate our homes from the business development of assisted living establishment. So now they're not going to have that walkway between the two places. Now they're building the individual living portable homes with their fence backing up to ours without the walkway. Not acceptable. We shouldn't have to be that close to a business. I never received any notices for these amendments. Now they want to amend the project further. Why didn't they know they wanted this pool and clubhouse in the beginning? How is this going to affect our utilities and anything else? What are the pros and cons of this new amendment? I don't really hear too much from these people saying anything about that. Also, the traffic. Elk Grove Planning says we don't need an additional light at East Stockton and Campwell. We are going to have all the traffic from this project and also the traffic from the project that is starting at East Stockton and Sheldon. Whoever does these evaluations of the traffic situation has to be in error. How would you like to be living with the traffic that will congest this whole area very quickly? Traffic control planning allowed a light at the park and ride parking lot and they can't justify a signal light where one is needed? Also, who is the inspector on this project? I never see anyone out there doing and expecting. Obviously, they're not because otherwise my fence would be fixed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
To address the issues, yes.
Seeing that there are no additional speakers, I'm going to close public comment and invite the applicant to come back to the podium. You can sit down, ma'am. And if you can address some of her concerns, please.
I can try to address some of her concerns. She spoke, some of them, I think, were, a lot of the traffic and some of those issues were issues, I think, that were addressed during the environmental review process at length. And so, but I think more of some of the personal comments that she made that related to her situation specifically related to the 10-foot wall and the, what was allowed was a 6-foot wall, and so that's what we were building. The wall that's been constructed is, it's not a CMU block wall, but it's a sound wall. And it's still the same in terms of sound, the sound barrier and that sort of thing. And so it was approved, an approved alternative for a CMU block. It's not identical to that, but it's walls that had been used in, throughout Elk Grove. The, there was a path originally behind the property, or behind the cottages, between the cottage and the wall. That has been removed and it was removed for the operator, as they were operating some other projects, they wanted to, they felt that having a path behind there posed some potential safety concerns as far as monitoring residents that may have, you know, problems walking, that sort of thing. They didn't want someone walking behind the house and not be seen and have a problem. And so when that was removed, basically, the cottages haven't been moved closer, so the space in the area is still maintained. It actually will be less activity between the cottages and the residents back there, so it actually should be better for them because there'll be less noise, less people, less activity. And I, was there another, the problems with, right now, they're still during construction. If there are gaps in the fence or if the contractors have said that they would do certain things that they haven't completed, then I can give her my information. She can contact me and I can circle back with the general contractor and make sure they do what they're supposed to be doing. Because if they've said they're going to do something, they need to fulfill that obligation. If there's another one that, another, I don't care, remember any other questions other than those. Is there one that...
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Matt, if we could hear from you two, I mean, because I'm not familiar with what the resident was talking about, her fence. Can you chime in? Is this something that's just in the middle of construction or is this an issue with the project?
Councilmember Soon, I can answer that. Darren Wilson's Development Services Director. We can check into with the condition compliance as well as the inspections going on and that. I don't know all the various details involved with this project to date. I know it's under construction. And then in regards to the pathway, I made a substantial compliance call because they did replace the pathway from behind to front the street with some sitting areas, some plaza areas as well, to enhance that walkway. So that's the reason why that never transpired to a public hearing. This change tonight, I felt needed to come back to the council because it was a substantial change.
Yeah, I understand. So if we could just follow up with her so she knows if it's going to eventually be taken care of after construction or something like that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I have no issue with adding more amenities to, I have a question for you.
Okay.
I have no issues with adding more amenities to a project. I think it's a prudent move and it's going to make the residents happier. Question, did you look or analyze at citing the clubhouse and the pool at the duplex numbers 41, 42, or 43 slash 44? It looks like if you did that, it'd be more centrally located for all of the residents and it might provide you that access to be closer to the assisted living, that then you wouldn't have to move the pool and provide a whole separate amenity against the clubhouse.
Well, those, I believe those pads had already been started initially in there. And this was kind of late in the game when they, when we decided to do this. We had looked at doing it over, you know, we also needed, the reason why we chose the, was it 23 and 24, is because, as you can see, that's where the street turns a little bit, so that, those cottage lots were actually a little bit wider to give us a little bit more room.
Yep.
The other location was going to be 7 and 8. That's actually wider location, but we discussed it with the staff and that's, you know, it backs up to the residents and so we felt that to try to push them away from the residents, the existing residents was a better idea. And so that's why we ended up working on 23 and 24. That way, it's still somewhat located, centrally located, but it's also wide enough.
There was logic behind it. That's all I needed to know.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I would just say that, like I said, I support this change and I also support the flexibility moving forward to make calls of substantial compliance. I think we have a great staff. They know the shared values of the city and I trust you to act in the best interests.
The only I'd like to add is, you know, obviously, I'm glad it came forward, but at least from now on out, there's some flexibility. So, thank you Darren.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, I support it as well. I mean, I, that's actually in my district and it's not far from my homes, but I've been kind of watching this as it's been going. It's a huge project. And, no, I think that's great, adding those kind of amenities for, you know, the more amenities, the better, to get people out of their homes
Yep.
and do some recreation. So, no, thank you for those considerations and I support both your proposal and the alternative proposal to give staff leeway to make those final adjustments.
The only additional thing I'd like to add is if you could exchange information with a constituent, I'd like for there to be some kind of communication. My guess is that there hasn't been.
I haven't heard, I've spoken to her in the past along, before, when we were initially going through and talking, I was, I was the one that was going through and talking to them about organizing or coordinating, starting the coordination of the wall and whether or not they were, they were interested in tying their existing fencing into the wall. And then once the construction took over, I passed all the information off of the neighbors onto them and they should be talking with the neighbors. So I have her information and I can give her my information again and make sure that we talk.
Yeah, I think that's important. You know, the fact that Ms. Reyes is here tonight says a lot, you know, she cares about this, you know, she cares about community. So you could extend that courtesy and connect with her.
Absolutely.
You know, and possibly either yourself or Matt or Darren, one of you can explain the options on what type of wall you can put in based on the conditions of approval.
To you or to her?
Well, I think to all of us. Because I think the issue is, is she feels that you guys did not put in what was originally on the conceptual plans, but I'm wondering if there was alternative materials that could be used, how that can be explained to her as well as everybody's listening.
Councilmember Detrick, I can answer that. There's your standard CMU or concrete masonry unit wall, which is the blocks you see with the rebar. There's also a proto-two wall that's an acceptable design. It's based on panels and piles of column, columns that act as piles and they just slip into the panels. So I don't know what this project proposed. I don't have the plans in front of me, but we can look into it to see if it's comparable to that design.
Okay. And, yeah, this wall is, it's a paneled wall and it's a sound rated wall. It, one of the benefits of this wall and one of the reasons why we chose it is that it requires less of a footing, so it's going to have less impact on, in the area between our property and their property, there is a slight grade change and so there, it's less impactful as far as digging footings and things of that nature, so it lends itself better for construction and be able to put it a little closer on property line rather than having to dig in and things of that nature. So it was just, it's easier from a construction standpoint.
Are you going to have some type of a permanent concrete base so it doesn't erode under the wall?
I, I'm not sure about, I'm not sure...
Because if you had a block wall, it'd be, you have a foundation all the way across. So...
I can't, I can't, I don't know all the details of it. I just know that, that it doesn't have a, like a footing that goes, that's wider and that goes
I understand.
under the property, but...
The concern is, is especially if you have a grade change, that there is an erosion, that you end up having gaps on that wall at some point.
I'd have to talk to the contractor and ask him that. I don't, I haven't heard of any problems. And we've had other contractors use this on other projects, so there hasn't been any problems before. So I'd have to ask him that question.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not a question. I just want to also reiterate my support for this project. I think the statistic is 10,000 people turning 65 every day in this country, so there's a great need for it. And I'm just going to, unless Vice Mayor, you already made it, I'm going to make the motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion, second.
Wait, wait, wait. Before you vote on that, I think we have a new condition that the Development Services Director is going to provide you for your consideration and the applicant's consideration.
So in anticipation of this request from the applicant, I feel it's best that we provide this flexibility and memorialize it. So if it's the will of council, I'll read the condition to the record and then you can move on with your motion.
Please.
"The project site is limited to one pool location as approved. A pool at an alternative location and design may be constructed on-site, all subject to the review and approval of the Development Services Director in his/her reasonable discretion. In addition, should the applicant propose an alternate pool location, the original pool location shall be replaced with landscaping and/or another outdoor amenity or amenities, all subject to the review and approval by the Development Services Director in his/her reasonable discretion."
Just one question. Do we need to say the pool will be constructed? You said, I heard you say may be constructed. Do we need to say will be constructed?
It's limited to one pool location as approved and that approval's tonight where the location is at the south end. And then this language gives the alternative to move it at my discretion and then replace that original pool location with another amenity or landscaping.
Okay.
Or both.
It doesn't speak to locate, doesn't speak to whether it would be constructed, it just speaks to location. Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Hobbs, does Councilman Soon have to go on record and, would you like to amend your motion to include that condition?
I will amend my motion to include that condition. Thank you.
Hey, is there a second?
Yeah, I amend my second. They know what they're doing and Darren knows how he's going to look at it.
Get a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, next item.
Take us to item 9.2, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2019-20, the capital improvement program with that budget and the annual approach pre-ation's limit.
Greetings, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, councilmembers. My name is Shaden Ryan, Budget Manager for the City of Elk Grove. Before I start, I would like to thank the city staff, in particular, the finance, accounting, public works, and city manager offices, for all their hard work in putting together this proposed budget and CIP. Each year, the budget is a collaborative and coordinated effort that wouldn't be possible without the teamwork of city staff. Brief overview of the presentation. We're going to start with discussing changes since the presentation of the proposed budget on May 22nd. And then we'll have a brief slide on the capital improvement program and a short-term slide on the capital improvement program, and a short-term and long-term discussion of the general fund, and then a discussion on special revenue and enterprise fund forecasts, and then concluding with a discussion on the performance measure program. So starting with changes since the May twenty-second presentation, specifically on FY nineteen twenty, the proposed CIP had the Laguna Creek master plan funded at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-five thousand being a potential grant, and then fifty thousand being local match. The city was unsuccessful in receiving a grant, hence the budget is reduced to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, all in local funding. To be combined with the bicycle pedestrian trails master plan update, a study is needed to build momentum toward future grant requests for environmental design and construction. The city facilities and assessment and master plan was originally anticipated to be completed by the end of June, but is now a future minor study, and the library and cultural arts center study is now anticipated to be extended beyond June. Due to additional anticipated revenues, I'm sorry, anticipated incentives, next fiscal year spending is increased in the economic development small business incentive fund by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Even incorporating all of these changes, the FY nineteen twenty total budget still remains at two hundred and ninety-one million dollars. So in looking at projected budget for FY twenty-one, I remove the class one bikeway local match programming, minor project budget for fifty thousand dollars from the roadway fee fund. The local match is actually intended for a local grant for future projects. I remove the Laguna Boulevard bicycle improvements project budget of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the Measure A Bike Ped Fund. The Measure A Bike Ped, Bike Ped Fund is already fully programmed with various projects, such as the improvements on Laguna Creek, White House Creek, and Elk Grove Creek Trail projects. So both of these projects are now listed in the future needs list in the CIP book. Implementing these changes, the FY twenty twenty-one projected budget still remains at two hundred and nine million dollars. It's a brief overview of the CIP. Capital improvements are planned for nineteen twenty through twenty-three, twenty-four, a hundred and forty-four million dollars in funded investment over the next five years. For in particular, twenty-four projects are planned for award in FY nineteen twenty. The total of a hundred and sixty-five projects have been completed since the city incorporated, valued at three hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. A list of completed projects is included toward the end of the CIP book, and a list of minor projects or studies in the, is also included in both the budget and the CIP book. So now moving on to talking about the general fund, which improves services for residents, recognizes economic growth within the city, region, and state, focuses efforts on the city council goals and priorities, and maintains healthy reserves and aligns allocations based on the city's reserve policy. So we're gonna start with the revenue side of the general fund. The general fund revenues are expected to grow modestly in FY nineteen twenty by three percent overall, and by four point one percent in FY twenty twenty-one. Contributing to the four point one percent overall increase in FY twenty twenty-one is due to the additional transient occupancy tax expected from a new lodging establishment, which is currently under construction. Approximately four hundred thousand dollars of additional transient occupancy tax is expected in FY twenty twenty-one from the first full-year operation of the lodging establishment. Additional net retail sales tax is expected from the fully operational Costco in FY nineteen twenty and FY twenty twenty-one. Then looking on the flip side at expenditures for the general fund. General fund expenditures for FY nineteen twenty assume significant growth by six point six percent for the current year, over current year estimates, and projected expenditures for FY twenty twenty-one assumes growth by two point nine percent. Animal shelter compensation, operations, and debt service costs for a full year of operation is assumed in both FY nineteen twenty and FY twenty twenty-one. However, due to delays in opening the shelter, some remaining startup costs are assumed in FY nineteen twenty. The inclusion of the startup costs results in the FY nineteen twenty operations budget being larger than FY twenty twenty-one. As a set aside, the estimated costs of a police officer's association memorandum of understanding and modifications to the non-representative compensation are assumed in FY nineteen twenty and FY twenty twenty-one. Per our revenue neutrality agreement with the county, the county share of property taxes drops from seventy percent in FY eighteen nineteen down to sixty percent in FY nineteen twenty, and then down to fifty percent in FY twenty twenty-one. If no questions on the short-term look at the general fund, going over to the long-term, recent changes at CalPERS causes purse payments to increase in the future. However, this forecast includes allowances for prepayment of purse unfunded liabilities for FY nineteen twenty through FY twenty-three, twenty-four. Every dollar paid as an accelerated payment to the unfunded liability is estimated to save a dollar in interest costs over, for the city over a twenty-year period. The franchise fee special project funding line is in the general fund forecast, and is a contribution to the general capital reserve fund, is being funded from recycling and waste franchise fee revenues. The forecast also incorporates the procedures from the amended reserve policy adopted by council on April twenty-fourth of this year. So before you is the forecast itself, similar table to what you saw on May twenty-second, but I wanted to elaborate on a couple of points. The three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in contributions from fund balance in FY nineteen twenty is for funding one-time expenditures, which is consistent with city adopted financial policies. The operating budget is still balanced. Per the recently amended reserve policy, when the city successfully retains a reserve amount exceeding the twenty-five percent for the economic, reserve for economic uncertainty, and five percent opportunity reserve for a given budget year, the closeout of the fiscal year will transfer half of the exceeding amount to the economic development business incentive fund, and the other half over to the general capital reserve fund. Maintaining the target level funding for the projected fund balance amounts in the next fiscal year will be considered before a transfer is initiated. The next two, five-year forecast display the activity in the economic development business incentive fund and the general capital reserve fund. The general fund five-year forecast can be found on page eighteen of the budget. So looking at the economic development business incentive fund, this forecast expenditures include an estimated two hundred K annually toward large business incentives, and the remaining expenditures annually fund the sales tax sharing agreement with the Ridge. The growing available fund balance over time provides resources for economic incentives when such opportunities present themselves. The economic development business incentive forecast can be found on page twenty-five of the budget. And then speaking to the capital reserve fund, so funded projects in this forecast include railroad property improvements, Old Town Plaza Phases Two and Three, Old Town Streetscape's Phase Two, and match funding for the Laguna Creek Trail Bikeway at SR ninety-nine. Similar to the prior forecast, the growing available fund balance over time provides resources for capital projects when such opportunities present themselves. The general capital reserve forecast can be found on page twenty-five of the budget. And now I would like to invite management and budget analyst Maria Phillips up to the dais to speak on special revenue forecasts and enterprise fund forecasts.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, and council members. My name is Maria Phillips, and I serve as the management and budget analyst for the City of Elk Grove. I don't know if this is echoing too. I will be providing an overview of the city's long-range financial plans. So first, we will look at the five-year plan for gas tax. Assumptions for this forecast are close to what was presented to the council in February, other than changes due to the transitioning to a core staffing model and contracting directly for maintenance services, which will begin in FY nineteen twenty. At the, at the February twenty-seventh city council meeting, council directed staff to move forward with adding new positions to the public works operation and maintenance division, which are partially funded by gas, by the gas tax fund. Hence, both salary and benefits and operations have increased in this fund. Moving up to revenues, the gas, the gas tax is currently receiving a three-year annual payment in the amount of a hundred and ninety-four thousand. This originates from the transportation congestion, congestion relief fund, which comes from the state's general fund. Allocations are based on registered vehicles and county road miles. Please note that the last payment will be made in FY nineteen twenty. And this, the long-term plan for gas tax can be found on page twenty-six of the budget Following, we will look at local streets and roads five-year forecast. Assumptions have increased in expenditures in FY nineteen twenty since the council retreat in February. This is, this is due to unspent appropriations for bond medium, green bike lane, pavement resurfacing, and pavement rehab. The Senate Bill One forecast can be found on page twenty-seven of the budget book. The Measure A forecast, the Measure A maintenance forecast will have an increase in salary and benefits and operations due to the transition to a core staffing model for maintenance services. With the exception of this, there have been no other changes in the long-term forecast. The Measure A maintenance forecast can be found on page twenty-eight of the budget Next, we'll look at the drainage fund. This fund has historically retained a very healthy fund balance, which is projected to be drawn down over time. There are approximately thirty mil, million in capital improvement program expenses programmed over the next five years, including projects such as Laguna Creek and White House Creek corridor, drainage improvements for Old Town Streetscape, southeast policy area drainage land acquisition, bond, bond road storm drainage improvements, and annual storm drain and repair upgrades. Drainage on average, on, drainage has on average five million of operation expenses annually, and this does include the increase to salary and benefits and operations due to the transition to a core staffing model for maintenance services. The drainage long-range financial plan can be found on page thirty of the budget book. Now viewing the recycling and waste five-year plan, much of the increase to expenditures are due to the Senate Bill one three eight three, requiring mandatory organic recycling statewide starting in twenty twenty-two. The city will in turn implement several new programs within the next three to five years, such as curbside organic collection, edible food recovery programs, inspection and enforcement programs. The city recognizes that there is a large available fund balance, and finance staff along with recycling and waste staff are committed to analyzing recommendations to bring back to council. The recycling and waste five-year forecast can be found on page thirty-one. Lastly, we will review the transit operations long-term plan. Transit operations has stayed on course with the ongoing long-term plan, with the exception of how the city has broken out the deficit. Please see the two columns at the bottom of the table. The Transportation Development Act, which is the local transportation funds plus the state assistant funds, are recognized as revenue in the year that SAG-HOG, SAG-HOG apportions them. Guidelines require that these funds be spent on current or future years, these funds cannot be applied towards prior year expenses. This leaves solely the general fund contribution to reduce the deficit over time. The negative fund balance is expected to turn zero in FY twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five, and will no longer rely on a general, general fund contribution. Moving up to the revenues for transit, what looks like, looks like swings in revenue is, in particular, from FY nineteen twenty to FY twenty twenty-one, is due to every other year, some of this revenue lives in the transit capital fund. Just wanted to point that out. The transit operations long-term plan can be found on page thirty-two of the budget book.
Quick question before you move on from this.
Absolutely.
What would happen if we just left that deficit, just left it there and let it ride forward, carried it forward? Would that put our TDA funds at risk?
If we let, if we left...
Yeah, we said we're not gonna make a contribution from the general fund, we're just gonna leave that deficit on the books.
It wouldn't necessarily impact the revenue or the funds that you receive from other agencies, the TDA or STA, but it would be a weakness on the city's own balance sheet, because that money needs to be funded from someplace, so we would be looking towards, that, that would need to be eliminated at some point over time.
Because it affects a credit rating, or?
No, because money has been spent on transit that didn't have resources, and the city needs to catch up and put those resources there for those past transit expenditures.
Yeah, but I guess, and all of this is kind of rhetorical in nature here, but if you're covering your expenses year over year over year, what does it matter?
It means that funds either from another source, like the general fund, has been fronted to cover this deficit, but it isn't recognized in the balance sheet at this point.
Okay, so I, I get that, the, the money's been spent, but if you carry it forward as a liability on the balance sheet, assuming you have assets to, to cover it, why, what is the negative?
The, the, if you're referring to like the capital fixed assets that might belong in the, in the transit fund, those cannot be, under TDA rules, be ever sold or used to take care of that deficit, they could only be recycled for future transit purposes.
So at some point, it would have to be trued up?
Yes, at some point, it would have to be true.
Do you want to true it up at some cataclysmic event?
Right.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions?
Next, Nathan Bagwell, Senior Management and Budget Analyst, will be providing an overview of the city's performance measures.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, members of the council, as Maria mentioned, I'm Nathan Bagwell, I serve as your senior analyst in the finance department. I'll be giving you a brief overview of our performance measure program. It supports council's four strategic goals, and staff reports quarterly and annually on these measures. For the current fiscal year, the projections are for the sixty-eight citywide measures that we have, eighty-three percent are projected to meet, exceed, or come within ten percent, which we would call on track for their target. Staff's recommendation is that council adopt the fiscal year nineteen twenty city performance measures targets in conjunction with adopting the annual fiscal budget. So we've had this program now for about five years, and one of the directives for staff from, Jason, this year, was to take a close look at our measures and make sure that they were substantive and informative, so we did that, and as a result of that, we are proposing some edits and changes for various reasons, such as for purchasing. Two measures related to average number and total number of solicitations, this was not truly measuring a performance, and this is something that in talking to staff, they can readily provide at any time. So in that vein, we're actually proposing to remove those measures from citywide consideration. In recycling and waste, there are some new measures being proposed to highlight work being done, as you've heard previously mentioned, mandatory state compliance, capturing those efforts, as well as diversion rates and outreach efforts, and another component, a caveat of this program, is that looking for innovation. And in that light, some new measures are being proposed by the Elk Grove Police Department to address crime and quality of life issues, as well as de-escalating crisis conditions. And then lastly, for risk management, we have several citywide measures for risk that we're proposing to remove and replace with departmental measures, also because these are not truly performance. These are great measures for tracking and keeping information for the city, however, as far as from a performance standpoint, they are, they lie in the realm of things that we don't directly control, hence, henceforth that proposal. And then lastly, human resources has a, has two diversity measures, one that's citywide and one that's departmental. The diversity measure that came forward two years ago as new, actually, in looking at this departmental and the citywide, they, they pull from the same data sources, and looking at them deeper, they're actually doing the exact same thing, so in essence, they're duplicative. So what we're proposing is bringing the departmental measure forward, because we have five years of history on that one, and then replacing the duplicative measure with that measure in that regard. So essentially, the same thing, but just going with the one that has the historical data on it. And so briefly wrapping up, taking a high, high-level look at the performance measures by council goal. The council goal with the most measures associated with it is high-performing organization, of which eighty-nine percent were meeting, exceeding, or within target. Secondly, safe and resilient community, ninety-three percent where we are meeting, exceeding, or on target. Next, we are, we're looking at the goal with city, with infrastructure, meeting its current needs, current and future needs, sixty-six percent meeting or exceeding or on target. And then lastly, the goal that deals with the vibrant community and sustainable economy, that one is seventy-one... that one is seventy-one percent meeting, exceeding, or on target. Be happy to answer any questions you might have about the performance measure program.
Any questions? No questions?
I'd like to go ahead and invite Shade and Ryan back up to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. So, I'd like to turn the agenda item back over to council for any additional comments, questions, or modifications.
Okay. Any other questions?
If none, then I would like to invite council to open a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the budget and the CIP and the annual appropriations limit.
Excellent, thank you, sir. At this point, I want to declare a public hearing open, and I want to open for a public comment. And I see a couple of speakers sign up to speak. First speaker is Gary Sibner, following Gary is Lynn Wheat. Mr. Sibner, come on up, please.
Mayor Lee, council members, thank you. My name is Gary Sibner, and I'm a member of NEST. I'm here today to speak about the capital improvement program, specifically two items within it. The I-five southbound off-ramp on Elk Grove Boulevard and the park and ride lot next to the I-five Elk Grove Boulevard on-off ramps. On February twenty-seventh, at the city council meeting, the city council made the right decision and directed that proposed revisions to the zoning code and general plan that could materially impact the CNU hospital project be removed. So, since the capital improvement program, program must be in line with the general plan, then the city council must follow its February twenty-seventh decision that all items that can material, materially impact the CNU hospital proposal be removed. That means these two items off of Elk Grove Boulevard next to CNU need to be removed. The timing of these two Elk Grove Boulevard changes is suspect. The items themselves don't make much sense. Currently, two lanes is totally unneeded on this I-five exit. There's also no specific location identified for the park and ride lot. These items would materially impact the CNU project, as ambulance access and increased travel, traffic are big issues. We ask that these two items be removed from the capital improvement program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sibner. Lynn Wheat, please.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank staff for answering the questions that I had regarding the budget and the time that they spent with me in answering them. The budget successfully implements the city council policies, and I have no technical criticism of the budget document per se. What do I do have criticism of is the less-than transparent manner in which key city council policies are adopted. For example, where does the public give their consent for the city to continue to run over a two-million annual shortfall in infrastructure maintenance, while at the same time the city regularly purchases property at questionable prices and carries notes when they resell? I have yet to see an appraisal report in council packets to justify the prices the city pays. But a more fundamental concern is when did the city ever turn to the voters and ask if there is an ideal size the city should be? I say this because the fiscal model the city is using to manage growth is apparently not working when I see critical CIP projects being put on hold due to funded, funding shortages. Either the new developers are not paying their fair share of impacts, or the city's spending priorities are out of whack and neglecting critical infrastructure maintenance and new construction. I would suspect that it's a little bit of both. I realize too many people in town are profiting from growth, so I am speaking as one who has to live with the results. The budget is a good document that reflects flawed policies. Thank you.
Seeing that there are no additional speaker, want to close public comment and declare a public hearing closed. Council deliberation in direction. Members?
Can I? I'm sorry, Bob. Mike, where'd you go? Could you please address with Mr. Sibner's comment about the off-ramps for our I-five? And the planning goes into, oh, great, thank you, Mr. Bucy.
Received a similar comment at the planning commission when it went for general planning consistency. So, and, and in that, after that meeting, I went back to look at this particular project, these two projects. So, for the Elk Grove Boulevard I-five southbound off-ramp, that's an improvement that's included, included in our current roadway fee program. It was, it's in the current twenty-fourteen version, and it's basically going to widen the southbound off-ramp at Elk Grove Boulevard and I-five from, to two lanes. And it's funded by the roadway fee program. I don't know how many years it goes back, it may go back quite a bit, but at least to the twenty-fourteen roadway fee study. It's also funded by the Lakeside CFD. So, that, that project's been around for a long time to, to address that concern that it was created for some other need. We are looking at this project and whether it's needed still, just, just, just based on these concerns that we've heard. It's possible that we will remove that project, it's no longer needed, but we'll have to look into it more. The I-five Elk Grove Boulevard park and ride lot is funded by the Lakeside CFD, it's just a park and ride lot. Essentially, transit really needs a park and ride lot, that location, there's no real place to, to get on the tra- to get on, take a, take the transit down to Sacramento, when you're looking at more of a commuter route, and it's been identified as a need in that area, and that's why we've been looking at it. And it's, it's been around for several years, two or three years, so. That project, we're having a really hard time finding undeveloped land to, that's in the right location for, that isn't zoned, affordable housing to put it on.
And so, you're going to look to see if, if the, the trip generations from the modeling warranted the second lane in the, during this timeframe, as opposed of?
Yeah, it was, yeah, I'd have to go back and look, but.
That's what I just want to restate.
No, we'll go, we'll, we'll hear you say it. Yeah, I think Caltrans has done some analysis too on it, as we're, we've, I've already tasked someone to look at that as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, and I just want to say to, you know, Mr. Sibner and other, other folks, I mean, the, there are infrastructure projects we do as a, as a city, irrespective of any of applications, just, we need to service that side of town. I think a park and ride is a beneficial use for this city, and I, and I, but I think it's a fair question about the off-ramp and, and, you know, whe- whether it, those were current growth or current populations that are feet, that are causing that to be needed, or whether it was in anticipation of something else. So, it's a fair question. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to thank the finance department and all the staff for putting together a wonderful budget document, and Public Works for putting together a great capital improvement program, and just the city manager's leadership for the way that the dollars are being spent and trending within the organization. With that, I will move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion?
Second.
Comment, councilman? All right, got a motion, got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention? All right, next item.
Take us to item nine-point-three, a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution confirming the Laguna West service area fiscal year twenty-nineteen-twenty annual report and ordering the levy for the Laguna West service area.
Good morning, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume. Good morning. It's been a long day. I am Kara Taylor Seaman with, uh, Finance Analyst for the City of Elk Grove, and I'm here to present the public hearing for your consideration for the Laguna West service area annual report and the levies for fiscal year nineteen-twenty. I do have a brief presentation for you. First, just some background on the service area. It was formed in nineteen-ninety-two from the cit- from Sacramento County, and the city has administered the program since two-thousand-and-three. The service area provides maintenance within the Laguna West area, which is roughly between Elk Grove, I'm sorry, yeah, Elk Grove Boulevard Laguna, and then between I-five and Franklin Boulevard. It provides for street sweeping, road maintenance, drainage services, and general administration. The annual requirements are established for setting the rates, assessing the levies for the area homeowners. This is a map of the area. It hasn't changed since nineteen-ninety-two, just the same. The annual increases are assessed at the maximum levels currently and may not be increased, so there's no recommendation for increase. In conclusion, staff is recommending that we maintain current service levels, provide for adequate revenue stream for all projects and services within the area, as well as maintaining sufficient reserves for future projects, and then also to maintain consistency with the budget document that you just heard about. So, our recommendation is for the public hearing and that you adopt the resolution for the Laguna West service area for fiscal year nineteen-twenty, confirming the annual report and ordering the levy. And I'm available for questions.
Any questions? There are no questions. Thank you. At this point, I want to declare public hearing open, open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment and declare a public hearing closed.
With staff's recommendation.
Got a motion?
Thank you.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention? Next item.
Take us on to item nine-point-four, a public hearing to consider a resolution updating the user fees for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center.
Good evening, council members. Lana Yoshimura, Community Event Center Manager. I am here this evening to discuss updates to the aquatic center fees. A little bit of background, the city council entered into a management agreement with CCSD in October of twenty-seventeen to operate the aquatic center. The council approved the initial fees for the aquatic center last July. As a point of information, CSD conducts an annual recreation fee schedule update. They updated their fees in December nineteenth, on December nineteenth of last year. Several of their aquatics fees are affected by their rate increases, and thus, staff is recommending updating our fees to match the, to be consistent with their operations and the aquatics market in general. The recommended changes include some changes to the water aerobic prices per class, changing several of the aquatics lessons to an hourly rate. This is done because the duration of camps and lessons may change based on the session, so it stays consistent with their operations. There would be an increase in cost for pool rentals of the fifty-meter pool. The instructional pool will actually be a decrease in cost. And then the recreational pool, which is the pool with the slides in the Lazy River, we never established a fee for that, so that corrects that oversight. Staffing for lifeguards and custodians, that rate would change to twenty-five dollars an hour. That recognizes some of their changes in minimum wage increases. And then we would also be implementing a senior citizen rate at sixty, at age sixty-two for people to have a discount at different services for passes and facility rentals. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions that I may answer?
Any questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Lana, did we not have a fee set for renting the recreational pool, because we didn't anticipate renting that?
We did not.
Portion out?
Yes, so we had pool party rentals that we established last July, but we did not have a recreational pool rental facility that was an oversight on our part.
Just an oversight, not that we necessarily changed our minds?
No, oversight.
And so, what that means then is that the entire Lazy River recreational pool and waterslides portion could be rented for that rate?
Correct, and that, we've actually had some inquiries from schools for end-of-year parties and things that are very interested in doing that, but we didn't have a rate, and so we're working through some of those issues, and that's when it became very apparent. So, we're starting to, as we go into operations, we're finding different, working out kinks as we move through it.
Well, that would make a pretty good birthday present. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, I'm not trying to put anything out there, I'm just saying.
Should've said that last week, we could've got. I think you already celebrated your slide.
Got some edutrig?
Lana, I guess one thing I'm a little disappointed with, that, that the rates are being raised right after being opening. If, if, if CSD changed the rates last December, we should've had it come back in January.
I, I agree, council member.
So, in the future, hopefully, we're going to be aligned within a few weeks of any modifications that are going to be done.
Yes, council member.
With CSD, so, I mean, it's just, very, it, it's bad timing, the, the image is kind of pretty poor.
Well, we also are decreasing some of the rates and installing a senior citizen discount, so you, there's some good and some bad there on both sides. We will align more closely. CSD does adopt an annual fee in, uh, study, so with this, we'll be coming back to you each year.
And hopefully, it'll be in January, not in?
Yes, sir.
June. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions? No other questions? Thank you. Want to declare public hearing open, want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public have signed up to speak, want to close public comment and declare a public hearing closed. Council deliberation in direction.
Motion.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention? Next item.
I'll take us to section ten, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item ten-point-one, which is consider a resolution approving the Civic Center Commons music sculpture selected by the review panel.
Good evening, council members. Nice to see you again.
Long time no see.
This evening, we have before you Phase Two, the public art project, which is the last remaining sculpture of the Avenue of the Arts. As you recall, the music sculpture had not been selected, and so, we went out to look for a different proposal, and we feel like we have come back with one, hopefully, for your approval. I'm going to introduce Shelley Willis, our arts management consultant, to, for the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pleased to be here tonight to present the design proposal for this project. I just wanted to review the selection process briefly. We distributed a request for qualifications, an open call in the springtime. We received thirteen applications. A panel was put together that included commissioners, irons, and goat ridge, as well as two arts professionals, Shia Young and Carlin Navy. They reviewed those qualifications and selected three finalists for the project. And those finalists were approved unanimously by the Arts Commission to produce proposals for the project. Those provo- proposals were then reviewed by the panel, and the panel selected Bob Bennett Jr. and Studio. That proposal was taken to the commission at their regularly scheduled meeting on May sixteenth, and they unanimously approved the project proposal. So, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Bob Bennett Jr. and his studio. Bob Bennett Jr. and his wife Alice are basically the team of the studio, and they grew up in the city of Elk Grove. They went to Elk Grove High School, and, and so they're, you know, particularly connected to the community and the project. The scro- the sculpture that they have designed for this project titled Computer Music is a collaborative effort that includes Bob and Alice and Ryan Rivas, who is currently the design director for the studio. So, Bob Bennett founded the sculpture studio as an extension of his family's historical bronze foundry, Bennett Sculpture. He began working there decades ago with his dad, Bob Bennett Senior, and his uncle Tom. And they've made multiple projects in civic and county organizations, as well as the Old Arco Arena. They've made sculptures for individuals that have been privately commissioned, this one for Blood Source in Sacramento. So, they're quite accomplished. The artwork description for the project for the Civic Center is, again, titled Computer Music. It's a modern take on, you know, this, this transformation that has happened in the music industry into, you know, making music with digitized music. So, the sculpture is, it really looks like a, sort of a computer-generated model. It stands seven feet tall. It'll be created with bronze and powder coated in a gunmetal gray color. And you can see from the side that this waveform is created, and that waveform will be from an original digitized music composition. The artists are currently thinking it's Ode to Joy by Beethoven, and the, that piece of music was digitized by Alan Turing in the early nineteen-fifties. Now, the commission and the panel both recognize from this side view that there's a very flat surface on one of the sides of the sculpture, so they've asked the artists to address that part of the sculpture and maybe add some interest, and the artists have agreed to do that. So, the budget for this project is twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a very tight budget. It includes everything, and includes the, the engineering, the footing, the pedestal, the fabrication, the installation, and the final design proposal. I'd like to recognize that the artists are here tonight, Ryan Rivas and Alice and Bob Bennett, so they're right here, as well as the members of the Arts Commission. So, if you have any questions, I'll take them now.
Any questions? No questions?
All right. All right. So we're asking for your approval tonight.
All right. At this point, I want to open for public comment. Seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment. Council deliberation in direction. Got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post-subvention? All right. You got your sculpture. Next item.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take us to item 10.2, which is consider a resolution finding the 2019 pavement slurry seal and resurfacing project exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act and approving the project and authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Central Valley Engineering and Asphalt for the, it's the preparation repairs project.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Council members, Bob Murdock, Public Works Director. The item before you tonight is the award of an asphalt repair contract. There's a few unique items here that we've discussed in the past, but one thing I'd like to talk about before we start is, this represents one of a number of things we're trying in Public Works to reduce the cost and improve efficiencies. This is the first time we've ever actually taken an asphalt repair contract and pulled it apart. What we've done is we're contracting separately for the preparatory work. Normally, we award it, we award the preparatory work, and the final paving is one contract, and the contractor's in there working for a while, and by pulling this apart, we're taking advantage of the market in that there are some contractors that specializes in this concrete repair, and we believe we've received some significant cost savings by trying this option. This is the first time we've tried it. We were hopeful that it would work, and it seems to have worked, and we believe we saved probably a couple hundred thousand dollars trying this, and it's one of the many things we're trying in contracting, try to leverage the market and tailor our contracts in order to get the best bids. So with that, we bid this project, received bids on April 23rd, received nine bids. The lowest bid, you see the three lowest bids here, the lowest apparent bidder is Central Valley Engineering and Asphalt, and they came in almost $300,000 below the engineer's estimate. Now, again, this was, I think, a result of a really good strategy in trying to take advantage of the market. Now, one thing we had is this was scheduled to come to the city council, was actually on the agenda for May 8th for award, but on May 1st, we received a letter from the Foundation for Fair Contracting asking the city to consider rejecting Central Valley's bid due to failures to pay prevailing wage and failure to follow apprenticeship rules in the past. As a result, the council delayed consideration of this to the May 22 meeting, and then subsequently delayed it again till tonight in order to give staff the opportunity to gather as much information as we can from both the foundation, from the contractor, as well as California Department of Industrial Relations. DIR is the state agency tasked with overseeing compliance with prevailing wage and apprenticeship, so it was very important that we were able to gather as much information from them as possible. So, you know, as a result of this, I think the citizens should know, and the council should know, that we have actually a robust prequalification process that actually touches on prevailing wage, apprenticeship rules, and a number of other requirements. Contractors are not allowed to bid on city projects in excess of $500,000 if they don't qualify, prequalify, through the city system. Our prequalification process is allowed under the state's public contract code. It doesn't require it, but it does allow entities such as the city to have a prequalification process. Under the municipal code, city's municipal code, as noted here, contractors are required to prequalify for public works projects over $500,000. Their prequalification is good for one year, and the questionnaire actually has a total of thirty-one questions divided into three parts, some of which touch upon OSHA, and again, prevailing wage and apprenticeship requirements. Now, after we've gathered all the information, gone back and looked at the prequalification package for Central Valley, this is essentially what it boiled down to. And I've broken this up, this table up into two parts. You'll see one, you see five rows here, two above this CVA, prequalification application date. Those are the two instances that were noted in Central Valley's prequalification application. Through that application, they self-identified two violations of prevailing wage and two violations of the apprenticeship requirements. Based on that, that was taken into account as far as their scoring goes, and CVA still prequalified to bid city projects. Subsequent to their application submission, three additional cases were brought by DAR and were settled by CVA. Those three are noted below that line. I'd like to note that in our prequalification package, had all five of those instances been identified, they still would have prequalified. So as a result of that, the staff's recommendation is to go ahead and move forward with award to Central Valley, considering, even considering all of this, and I know that Central Valley is a representative here to answer questions if need be. And so with that, staff's recommendation is to move forward with award to Central Valley as the apparent bidder. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? No? No questions? Thank you. At this point, want to open for public comment. Seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak, want to close public comment. Council deliberation in direction.
Second.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post-subvention? All right. Think we're done. Let's adjourn this meeting at 9:01.